We did. We wanted to get it done.
All right, we will call our meeting to order and start to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Mayor Thompson couldn't be with us tonight, so get me. We'll start with our council activity reports. For myself, I had an area center board meeting, the code committee meeting, the downtown committee meeting, and the Stearns County Municipal League meeting. I think that's it. Councilman Hersberg.
I had a code meeting.
Councilman Ranky?
I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Conference this last weekend and had to pick up a lot of interesting information from there and learn about things I don't quite know yet.
Good. Councilman Gilmore?
Downtown redevelopment and Sterns County Municipal.
All right, and we don't have any department head reports. So next, we have our consent agenda. Page one is the minutes from... Kind of wrapping up loose ends, the minutes from December 10th, 2018 Public Works Committee, April 25th, 2018 Policy and Procedures Committee, November 30th, 2018 Policy and Procedures Committee, July 23rd, 2018 Airport Commission, November 1st, 2017 Cable Committee, March 9th, 2017 Environmental Committee, October 23rd, 2017 Policy and Procedure Committee, April 20th, 2016 Policy and Procedures Committee, February 1st, 2018 Special Park and Tree Board, January 14th, 2019 Regular City Council. We also have the vouchers on page two totaling 2016 $235.07. And Ron Mergan is interested in attending the 82nd Annual Least Water Operations Conference, March 27th to the 29th, 2019 in Brooklyn Park, Minnesota. The registration fee is $390 plus mileage, meals, and hotel accommodations. And that is our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
All right, motion by Councilman Hersberg, second by Councilman Ranky. All in... Gilmore, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. All right, next, we have the Northland Securities bonding reports.
And your... Oh, I'm sorry, your...
No, go ahead. Page one of our update.
And, Your Honor, due to the snow and the roads, the representative from Northland isn't able to be with us tonight, but I have the information and I can go through it with you. In your update, there is... On page one, there is a comparison here. This is... This scenario here is your street project, which includes the stormwater with the three entities. And we had some discussion prior to this about what percentage should be assessed to the railroad, Senex, and Mastermark, or I'm sorry, Avon Plastics. And this is your three scenarios that were presented. And Public Works met and they recommend Scenario C, which is the city paying... Well, first, we had proposed the city pay 32.9% of that project, which is $736,000. Then, the council had a meeting and it came back that the city would pay, possibly pay 50% of the $736,000. And then, Option C, Chuck went through and found some additional areas that the city could cover. And that came back at 41.5% of the $736,000, which would be $305,676. And that's the scenario that Public Works Committee has passed a motion to recommend to the city, is your Option 3 in your packet. So after revenues brought in and assessments are done, that would leave a payment to the city under Option C of $155,323. This is a 15-year bond. All the scenarios are for 15 years because the assessments were larger than our normal that we usually have. The lot sizes are bigger. And so, it would be a hardship to the residents to go 10 years. So we haven't done a 15-year bond since, oh, 2004, I believe. But because these lots are so much bigger, the council had discussed that and thought that would be better for the taxpayers. So this evening, one of your decisions will be which scenario that the council would want to go with. And that would give the Northland Securities an understanding of which number to get the bond documents ready for. And it would also give Chuck and Ron the right percentages for them to proceed. And then, we could talk with Avon Plastics, Senex, and the railroad as to what their numbers would be in the end. So if you go to the next page in your update, which says Option A on the top, what they did at Northland is they took all three of these scenarios and put it on one page so you could see the comparison. So the next nine pages are each one of the scenarios broke down. So it'll say Option A, and it will show the bond and the payment amounts. And then, it will go to Option B. And then, the last one is your Option C. And this shows the debt schedule and the payment amounts. And we have to levy for 105%. That's mandated in the state of Minnesota. So it makes sure that you can make your payment. So that's those documents there. So you can go through your packet until you get to... On the top, it'll say AMPI. Now, the AMPI project is the city has in the past financed large projects for AMPI and not charged a fee. And this scenario here is for 15 years. It should say AMPI on the top.
It's on page 14 of the update, if that helps. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So this is a bond, general revenue bond, for $2,275,000 for AMPI's wastewater expansion. This is for 15 years. AMPI, if you look on the... 15... Page 16 of your update. This would show their debt schedule. With the... It'll also show that their interest rate. Their interest rate, it does increase over the life of the bond from 3.3% to 4.4%. It is a 15-year scenario. The city will still need to show these... This bond on our financials. We are like their guarantor. The bond payment will be listed on their utility bill. So when they pay that, then as soon as we get the notification, we can send that in, that payment in for them. And the other side of AMPI is... Project is funded by a grant. And the last document in your packet, which should be just a couple pages further, should say Public Works on the top. Two more pages and it should be Public Works.
Page 17.
Yep. Page 17. The first scenario there is an estimate for the new public works facility is estimated at $3 million. We had it run at 15 years and at 20 years. We haven't... I haven't finished going through the RFPs to bring to the interviews the architects to finish the drafting. But this is an estimate that Ron preliminarily had. At 15 years, the interest rate goes from 2.8% to 3.95%. This bond would also be paid for out of partial... Out of water, partial out of sewer, and partially out of the general fund. So this payment would end up being, let's see, approximately... $97,173 a year, roughly. And then, so you'd have to levy for this $97,000 along with the $155,000. That is from your street project. So we'd have that going on to your levy for 2019 and 20... Well, your first ones will be in 2020. There is a partial interest that sometimes is due in 2019. Just depends on when the project gets completed. So on this project, one thing this council needs to consider is, do you want to go 15 years or 20 years on this project? We do have another large street project in two years. I believe, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that one over $3 million in two years, too?
I believe that one is less. It's a smaller one because in 2023, then we have the downtown area, which is quite large.
Okay. So with adding to your levy, about $255,000 in payments, we don't have any bonds that are going to be coming off right now. So that's going to be quite a significant increase in your taxable levy amount to the residents. So we'll see if there's any that we can restructure to try to get that number down. Because that's quite a significant increase to try to cut. We really don't have a lot of fat left in our budget. So $155,000... $255,000 is going to be quite a bit to be able to increase our levy by. I did ask Jessica or Tammy Omdahl from Northland to come to your next meeting on February 11th, in case you have any further questions or would like some technical answers. If there's anything I can answer, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Or you can think on it and we can put it on the next agenda and run some numbers and see what you think.
I feel like I would need some time to go through this personally.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. I wanted council to be aware of what numbers we had and what we're looking for for effect to the budget. And I should know by February 11th if there's any refinancing that we can do or adjustments we can do for our present bonds to try to keep that bond payment down.
The one thing that I was going to ask about was the... I know we have in the 2019 street project redoing out at Deepman Drive and now with Shopko closing down. Is that something that we still want to include in that? Or... I mean, I know it's not a ton of money, but...
Shopko doesn't own the property. A company out of California does. So you could proceed with that project if the council so desires. You could still proceed with that and assess that because it's not... Shopko wouldn't be involved.
Okay.
I thought we had decided to go ahead with that.
That's my understanding. That is included in 2019.
Because no matter who someday buys it, the better approach makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they have been notified, so they are where... They haven't had any... You haven't had any calls from them saying, "Don't assess our property," or anything like that?
Currently, it is in the plans and it is moving forward.
Okay.
And Chuck and Ron, do you guys have anything you want to add to any of those numbers?
Well, I think they're all realistic numbers and guess the council does need to be aware of them.
And when do you guys need a final decision? Is February 11th okay on the street project on which percentage of sewer and water or stormwater?
Yeah, I think after the council decides what assessment option they want to pursue, we would meet again with Senex and the railroad and Mastermark, who saw at that point in time, just to run through their revised numbers with them.
Okay. Do we need a motion to table that until February 11th?
Yep. We'll just put it on your next agenda.
Sounds good. All right, and then next, we have the Meeker Cooperative Broadband High-Speed Internet Service on page 25 of the update.
Mr. Mergan is with us? Do you mind taking a... CEO with Meeker Electric.
Thank you. Tim Mergan with Meeker Co-op Light and Power Association. As what's stated here, what I can see in the council, just real quick, a little bit on our project, we are trying to provide high-speed internet to all of our service territory. Basically, that's to all of our members and then, or non-members alike. Our service territory basically encompasses all the rural areas of Meeker County, parts of Stearns County, Wright County, Candy Ojai County, Redville County, and McLeod County. So it hits all the counties that touches Meeker County. What we are doing is we are putting in a fiber backbone to our 14 different substations throughout that entire service territory. Off of that fiber backbone, we are going to run fiber to roughly 48 different poles, 120-foot tall poles that are basically spaced out every five or six miles radius type thing. And then, off of that, we are going to provide a fixed wireless service to our customers, if you will, at that point, so they can get high-speed internet, trying to blanket the entire county. With that said, we are asking the city of Painesville for an easement on what I believe is referred to as your water tower site east of town here, to place one of the poles on that site. And for that, we would bring fiber directly into this building. If the council so chooses and you want to use that service from us, then you will actually have high-speed fiber in this facility. So that's basically what we're asking for. Can take any questions or whatever at this point.
Tim, the people that are watching right now, would there be... Would they be able to get on to that if they are in the city? Would they be able to access that?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, again, that's part of our plan, is that we are offering it not just to our members, but to anybody that basically with... Living within that radius, they're going to be able to get that service from us. So that's part of our feasibility plan, if you want to call it that, that we will need non-members to sign up for the service as well to make it work. So, yeah, the more the merrier.
Thank you.
Another question. If there's commercial people who would want fiber to their buildings, is that something they... It's going to cost them, I get that.
Yeah, I'm not going to say yes or no to that because we're not at that point yet where we've made the decision as to where we're all going to go with, let's say, fiber to the home or fiber to the business. That's something we're still evaluating because that's an expensive project to do. And I'll just, real quick, I'll give you some background on that. When we started this project, it was... We first took a look at this in November, I think November of 2016, we started doing some feasibility studies and all that type of stuff. And our engineering firm that we brought in to help us with this whole project, we actually did two different studies trying to get fiber to the home, if you will. Basically, fiber to everybody throughout our service territory. We could not make it work. They're just economically, you can't do it. We just covered too much area, too few homes, that type of thing, so we couldn't do it. So we basically wound up putting things on the back burner for a while. And then, we came up with this hybrid system is what we call it. Basically, doing a limited amount of fiber and then doing fiber to those poles and basically providing high-speed internet that way. So that's our first priority. This entire project's a two-year build-out. It's going to take us about two years to get the whole thing, you know, built out. And once we have that done and we're, you know, the first get-up-and-go is going to be able, you know, provide the wireless service. And then, after that, depending on how things are going, it might make sense for us to do exactly that in like the town of Painesville and some of the other towns as well, to get fiber directly into some of the businesses that absolutely want it and need it. But I just can't commit to that right now. We are committing to like, you know, the city hall here. We will bring it into the city hall as part of the agreement here. But where we're going to go from that point, I just can't say right now.
Okay, can you tell me what kind of speed they're going to be getting on your wireless system?
We are starting out... Our slowest speed's going to be a 25.3, so 25 down, 3 up. Our next tier is a 55, so 50 down, 5 up. And then, beyond that, we... We're not real sure what we're going to do beyond that yet. That's what we're starting in with. We'll see once where things go. We might offer a higher speed on the wireless beyond that. We fully expect that to happen, but where that's going to come in, if it's going to be like a 75, 10, or 110 or something like that, I'm not 100% sure yet where that's going to be. But our minimum is going to be that 25.3, which really, when you're looking at anybody else out there, I'll call them, you know, competitors doing the wireless-type systems, if they get up to that speed on their high end, that's it. And that's where we're going to start in.
By competition, you mean the rural competition, not necessarily...
Right, right, right. Yeah, I'm talking about basically the guys that are putting them on silos and grain bins and that type of stuff. I mean, there's a reason they're doing that and, you know, more power to them, but we're going to go above and beyond that.
And this easement covers only the property out there where the water tower is?
Right, yep.
Okay, I just... There was mention in this email of all city-owned properties, so I want to make sure that that's not...
I think the only thing spelled out in there is the easement up there on that water property site. And then, we will, you know, need to get a path coming down here at some point as well.
Yeah.
And we had looked at going down 34 from the water tower property and then coming across the ambulance garage property because we own behind John Deere. So we took down that way and then up by the RV dump and then in the right-of-way down to the city hall.
So would they then have easement wherever those cables are run through the city property out there?
It'll be in the right-of-way most of the way.
It'll be in the right-of-way most of the way, but yeah, going across the property, the ambulance garage property. But right now, this is just the easement up at the water tower property.
So there'll be a separate easement for coming across that property when they're ready to lay that?
Yep.
Okay. And then, my one other just kind of concern I wanted to ask about was the grantee has the right in its sole discretion to determine the manner and method of clearing, including but not limited to by chemical. And I just wanted to find out like what kind of chemical you might be using since this is out there by our water tank.
Sorry. I couldn't answer that. We hire a licensed contractor to do all of our tree trimming and spraying and that type of thing, so what the exact chemical is, I couldn't even tell you.
We get the water from the water tower anyway. All the pumps are coming from other directions, bringing it.
Right.
What's that?
The water tower, we're not getting water from the water where the water tower sits. The wells are pumping to the water tower. That makes sense. Your water's all in the case.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, though, that it was, you know, not going to be in any way potentially damaging or harmful.
I would think the biggest thing here is that they do hire a licensed contractor that is certified for spraying the whatever chemical they're using. And if they're doing that, I would feel comfortable that it would be safe.
Yeah.
Ron, you agreed on a site up there then, where to place it?
Yes, well, it's within the easement, then it's within the debt...
The last 75 feet of that easement is where we got to place the pole.
It's on the other side where you're currently moving out.
From the current building that the county has, it'd be just to the north and a little bit to the east of that.
So it wouldn't be an inconvenience for...
No, no. We looked at it and if we want to place a future water tower up there, I had Walton and Make look at it and they said it would be fine. That we would still have room up there.
Is there any other questions or discussion on that?
I'll make the motion to approve the electric system and fiber optic system easement and agreement for easement and fiber optic line between the city of Painesville and Meeker Cooperative Light and Power Association.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hersberg and a second by Councilman Ranky.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Next up is page 15 of our agenda packet. Transfer fund... Transfer from Fund 125 Airport Capital Improvement to Fund 455 Painesville Municipal Airport Fund. Staff is requesting a few permanent transfers from Fund 125 Airport Capital Improvement to Fund 455 Painesville Municipal Airport Fund for the state and city's share of projects to be posted back to December 31st, 2018. Transfer of $20,109.70 for the Crack Seal Project. Transfer $17,572.50 for the land acquisition project. Transfer $20,973 for the 2019 hangar project. For a total of $58,655.20 to cover the state and city's share of each project.
Okay, I'll make a motion to transfer $20,109.70 for the Crack Seal Project, $17,572.50 for the land acquisition project, $20,973 for the 2019 hangar project, a total of $58,655.20. And the Fund 125 Airport Capital Improvement to Fund 455 Painesville Municipal Airport Fund for the state and city's share posted back to December 31st, 2018.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion by Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman Hersberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have the downtown snow removal order... Next we have the downtown snow removal ordinance and fee schedule. Ron Mergon, do you wanna report on that?
Sure, Ron, this is obviously for informational tonight and will be passed after 10 days. But our current policy at our downtown, I believe everybody's aware of it, but we take the snow off the sidewalks and plow everything onto the street. And with that, I believe it was instituted in roughly 1990, we've charged a $1 per foot and that has not been changed since. The area that we cover in the downtown is highlighted on your maps. There's a couple that, areas that we do include that is south of Business 23 and there's also one, or the, the row house apartments, when they were built, they also asked to be included in it and which we did at the time. Came from the Budget and Finance Committee that this be increased to $1.50, so a 50-cent increase per foot. And I think that would bring in roughly about $2,500, because it's real close to 5,000 billable feet that we have. And I believe the reason it was instituted back in the early 90s there was simply because the businesses downtown, if they would have, or if a business had its own parking lot, obviously they have to incur all their snow removal themselves and why should the taxpayers pay in a sense to have the snow removal off the business's parking area? Obviously, we do not charge for the snow plowing there, just the removal. If you wanna know our rough cost on just the trucks alone that we contract out is anywhere from, on a slow year, about 6,000 all the way up to, I think our most expensive year was about 13,000. Like I said, that's just for the trucking, that doesn't include the cost of the tractor, blower, or anything else. So if you're gonna include total costs, you could easily double that. So at the $1.50 a foot, it would still, I believe it's still a fair deal for the business owners downtown.
And your honor, this evening, there's no action required. By state statute, we have to post it for 10 days, so it'll be on your next agenda for action.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? All right, next up we have the website update.
And Kristen is gonna come out and show you where, how we're doing on the website.
Hi. Hello.
Oopsie too far.
All right, and so if you see on the screens, we have images of what the general look of the website will be. This is the city council page and that's the general design. It does have filler text in it, which we will fill in once we have more of a website up and running. And we can always change images and everything, we can practically change almost anything we want besides like major things. And so, that's gonna be the general look of all of our side pages, sub-pages and everything. And we also have a look of our homepage as well, but I don't know if that's up or...
Is that another?
I had another one, but I don't know. There we go. And then, yep, this is a general look of our homepage with a image banner, which will cycle through several images, which we can upload and take down as we please. It also has spots for news stories and announcements, as well as a calendar with events on it. And also with quick links and the drop-down menu at the top. And the quick links are basically what we figure most people will be going for, like what they wanna get to quickly, like paying water bills. And we also have a section for the DMV, since there's really no information out there, we're including it in the city website. And so, this is the general look of what we have. It is just still images right now, they are currently, Revize is still currently working on building the site. And I am currently working with them to create the citizens' request form page and so connecting them to departments and their emails so that we can connect and get citizens and citizens, like a direct contact to like Public Works, Fire Department, like with any questions or if there's like a light out that they wanna, citizens wanna report, they can send in, fill out the request form and Ron or any of the other Public Works can see it and take care of it at their own time. No need for people to call in or drop by to talk to Ron directly. And we're also working on the setting up new subscription and so citizens can subscribe to our website and they'll be emailed when we post announcements or post alerts. So if we have like, maybe announce like when the snow removal or snow ordinance comes in, like when we're plowing or when cars need to be off the streets. And so it's a way for us to like keep in touch with them and for them to like keep updated with us. And that's what we're currently working on and I did just recently set up Google Analytics as well. And so that'll be embedded into our page and so, or into our website. And so we'll be able to look and see how many visitors we get to the website, what pages they go to, what pages they stay on the longest, and what they're clicking and what people seem to be using more on our website. And so we can work on improving it and seeing what needs to be improved later on and seeing what our customers might want for future. And so if there's any questions, I can answer.
Kristen, is this going to be mobile-friendly as well?
Yes, it will be. It is, it will be mobile-friendly, it'll, it is a responsive page and so it will change to the size of the screen that is being viewed on. So phones, tablets, laptops, desktops, it'll work.
When do you expect to have it up and running?
I do believe the dead, the planned finish date would, is gonna be May because there is, we're still working on creating that website, we're still in, still putting in finishing touches. And then there is also training that needs to be done for myself and Renee and whoever else we decide on, who needs to be trained on updating and changing the website and so. And so, once that training is all done, then we will be able to go live with the website and citizens will be able to start accessing it.
And we're going to have our council meetings livestreamed on there, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Are we having our, we'll be able to have our council meetings livestreamed, is that...
We should be able to and I'll continue working on that, but yep, that is the main goal, is that we should be able to have our council meetings live, streamed live online and everything, so it's more accessible.
I think it looks great, I'm excited. Thanks.
Thanks, Kristen.
All right, next up is the AMPI Letter of Understanding. We have a verbal report from Chuck or Ron.
Yeah, I guess as the council is aware, we're currently working on a project that would separate AMPI's industrial waste and, and actually direct it out to the wastewater treatment facility and be handled separately, you know, at least through some initial processes at the, at the facility. And the goal of that project is, it will allow AMPI to increase some of their parameters of their waste, in particular they'll have, be able to have a higher BOD, it actually will raise from 4,000 to 4,500 pounds per day. And as we go through this process, AMPI has requested that they're able to go to that limit now rather than wait till the project's completed. So, in front of you is a, a temporary amendment to their AMPI Significant Industrial User Agreement that they have with the city, that would basically allow that, it would allow them to discharge additional BOD into the system as we move through this pros, project. In addition, during the summer months, they would like to increase their flow from 400,000 gallons a day to 450,000 gallons today, a day. So that, that's what this amendment really does, it allows them to do that through the course of this project. As this project moves forward, we will be actually redoing their Significant Industrial User Agreement, so this is something you'll see back in front of you probably in the next couple of months. Some other provisions that are in there that are highlighted, AMPI did request that $50,000 from the Aeration Pond Replacement Fund be dedicated to this project and that fund receives $200 a month from AMPI as well as all the surcharge funds when they exceed their limits. Basically, this, this temporary amendment will be in effect and, you know, like as I mentioned, until the sewer separation project is complete. And if at any point AMPI decided not to move forward with that, the SIU amendment would be revoked immediately, they'd be back on their original SIU agreement, so. Anything I missed, Ron?
Under one of the surcharges, that is the tool that we actually use to keep AMPI or keep them in check. If they do go over that, or the current rate was $7.30 per pound, if they go over the 4,000. And we looked at, now it will start at the 45.01, but that rate will be bumped up to, what is it, $8.30 and then 12.30 and 14.30 if they go over 6,500 pounds. And so those increases, they will get pretty significant fairly fast.
Any questions on that?
No, I'll make the motion to approve the Letter of Understanding and temporary amendment to the Significant Industrial User Agreement. Second.
The motion by Councilman Gilmore and a second by Councilman Hersberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so up next is our stormwater project, the assessment options.
Yeah, just a quick update, this was talked about a little bit at the beginning of the meeting in dealing with the financing portion of the project, but really, as the council may recall, we, when we talked about the assessments for the proposed Railroad Street Drainage Improvement Project, we had, we had laid out a scenario for assessments and we were asked to come up with some other, some potential other assessment options. If you look at the sheet in the handout, option one is the option that was originally in the report. Basically, that was based on drainage areas to determine the proper share. And just to, you know, maybe revisit the costs, as the council may recall, the storm sewer outfall line from the pond up to the regional pond was gonna be a city cost, that's at 126,000. And then the rest, the 610,000 was gonna be split amongst the city, Avon Plastics, Painesville Farmers Union and the railroad based on proportion share of their drainage areas. And you can see under that scenario, the city's total cost was about 32.9% of the project. Option two, which was talked about, was just splitting the project 50/50, the city paying 50% and the remaining 50% to be assessed to the three property owners, the three other property owners. You can see the breakdown there. Option three, basically, we, we took a look, re-looked at some of the drainage areas and there's some potential, we can pick up some additional area to the west of Garfield Street Avenue with this project, so that actually increased the city's portion, proportion based on area. And so option three is identical to option one, except the area, the city's area was increased and you can see that on the figure, so the city's share went up to that 41.5%. So those are, those are really the different options that were looked at.
Question, what does the city usually do on street projects? If you're on a business?
Street projects, they are run on a 50/50 basis, other than the city does pick up, you know, the water and sewer.
So, my question, I guess, would be, since these are businesses, we're not gonna do 50%?
Storm sewer generally does not run along that, storm sewer is generally based on an area basis, not picking a percentage.
I think usually if you look at the, the projects, like the 2019 project, I'd have to look at it again, but I think typically the overall amount assessed is usually in that mid twenties, 25 to 30, I think, percent, when you factor in all the, all the costs that are...
Oh, okay, gotcha. All right, I'm just making sure that...
Certain, certain pieces are...
Businesses are getting treated the same?
Yeah.
And that, not just because they're a business, 'cause you're looking at a $180,000 to get assessed, and how many years is that connected, Ron?
15.
And do, have we talked to the, Avon again and Senex about the, any of these scenarios or not?
Not since...
Not since the last meeting?
Not since the last meeting.
And at that last meeting, they were at that 207, correct?
That is correct.
Right?
I guess at the Public Works meeting, you felt this is, it would, it's a little bit more of a fair scenario.
Yeah, 'cause it...
On the flip side, you can, if you're a taxpayer, you're also looking at, well, why are the taxpayers picking up the area for the businesses? So, and it goes both ways.
Nice move. Public Works like three because it's based on drainage, where the city is definitely gonna gain a little drainage from this project, which is your yellowish on option three. So this is all based on square footage of property?
Correct, yeah. If you, if you look at option three, it's based on the area of those, those different colors. So you took the area and then, I believe, you know, the area in green is, is Avon Plastics, the blue area is Senex, the red area is the railroad, and then the orange area would be the city's contributing area.
Yep, but it's on square footage, then?
Yep.
And that's gonna, we're hoping, take care of the big pond down on the bottom on Railroad Street? Is that usually where we have the pond at? The water, you all...
Yeah, basically what we're trying to do is divert a bunch of this water out of the Railroad Street Storm Sewer System and divert it south or north under the tracks to the other pond that lies up by the river.
So this isn't running into the holding, it's not running into that holding pond by my street down on Railroad End?
The majority of the water, or some of it now is, yes. Some of that will now be diverted when it's done.
So then Palmero is gonna go there, Garfield and the rest is gonna go someplace else?
Correct.
They're splitting, right?
Yeah, we're trying to alleviate some of the pressure off the Railroad Street Drainage System, just due to some of the flooding that's happened in that area in the past.
Well, there gets water down there, um, there's, I was just making sure on that.
Is there any more discussion on that? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve assessment option number three, city responsible 41.5% of stormwater drainage project. I'll second that, even though I think it's a lot of money for a business. A lot of money, but...
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Hersberg and a second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion carried. Next up, we have sale of a property. Jean Christen has signed a purchase agreement for Lot Six Block One. She wishes to purchase in Heatherwood Lot Three. The closing is scheduled for February fifth, two thousand nineteen. So we have the attached documents related to the closing on the property.
I'll move to approve Resolution Two Zero One Nine Dash Oh Eight, approving sale of property to Jean Christen, warranty deed and certification for property transfer form, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign all necessary documents for the closing on the property.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Ranky and a second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we have the surplus property, the police department, two thousand eleven Ford Crown Victoria. Chief Wagner?
Thank you. So we did get that, the two thousand eleven Crown Victoria listed and sold on eBay. Vehicle came in substantially lower than I expected at seven hundred dollars. However, the buyer of that vehicle has failed to pay and is no longer communicating with me. So I have submitted everything to eBay to recoup our final value. And I guess at this point, what I would ask to do is simply hold on to that vehicle. With the purchase of the two thousand and nine Crown Victoria, a lot of the engine and mechanical parts from the two thousand and eleven will fit with the two thousand and nine. So if we do end up running into some issues, whether it be transmission or engine with the K-nine squad, we would have the ability to pull parts from that two thousand and eleven to fix the two thousand and nine if, if needed. And then at such time as we got rid of that two thousand and nine, if we haven't touched the eleven, we'd probably sell that vehicle at, at that time. But for now, I think it's probably in our best interest, especially with it selling as low as what it did, to keep that vehicle strictly as a kind of a parts vehicle, just in case something happens.
Where are you going to keep it?
Craig Elfring with CNS has been gracious enough to offer to store it at his facility.
I'll make a motion to reject the bid of seven hundred dollars for the two thousand and eleven Ford Crown Vic and store the vehicle in the event parts would be needed for the two thousand and nine Crown Vic.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gilmore and a second by Councilman Ranky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have our informational. We have the December liquor store reports, the two thousand and eighteen year-to-date overtime reports, West Central sanitation, January garbage rates. We also have our February and March meeting schedules on our update, and the special joint council and E-DEP board meeting has been canceled for tomorrow night. And new dates will be brought to the next meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.